First, we're gonna have our invocation. Associate Pastor Raven Deck with Freedom Baptist Church. Pastor Deck, you're here. And then we're gonna have the pledge after Pastor Deck. Come up, sir. Please stand.
Thank you for doing this, sir.
That's great. Father, thank you so much for all the blessings that you've given to us. Father, we thank you for the safety you've given to us in the recent storms. And we want to remember the victims of those storms over several states. Lord, we ask that you would comfort and that you would bless. Father, for our leaders, we ask that each one would have wisdom that comes from you, whether it be at the federal, state, or local level. And then, Lord, for this council, the mayor and council members, the manager, the attorney, anyone else that speaks tonight, may they have wisdom that comes from you and may they be, may they speak with grace. And it's in the name of Jesus we pray.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Pledge, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have our roll call.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
Councilmember Williams sent, I mean, I'm sorry. Councilmember Stevens sent a memo in that he was gonna be asked tonight for some personal business, so he's not with us tonight. Next, we have the approval of the work session and regular meeting of October 1, 2018 for adoption.
We move to adopt.
Any discussion? All favors right hand. Minutes are approved. Presentations. This is a little bit hard. Resolution expresses appreciation for service rendered by Sally Johnson as employee of City of Goldsboro for more than forty-two years. That's a long time. And I've known Sally very well. All right. Well, hold on, Sally. Let me read it. You just hold on, man. You're getting ahead of me.
She's ready to go.
Yeah, she's working on that "let's get out of here" thing. Anyway, Sally Johnson retires on November 1, 2018 as an executive assistant with the planning department of the City of Goldsboro with more than forty-two years of service. Sally began her career on August 18, 1976, as a baby, no, I'm sorry, as a secretary with the planning department. And on June 19, 1985, Sally was promoted to executive secretary with the planning department. Over Sally's vast career with the City of Goldsboro, her positions have been reclassified as office assistant to, customer service, and administrative assistant. On January 1, 2016, Sally's position was reclassified as executive assistant where she served to her retirement. Sally has proven herself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of the fellow workers and citizens of the City of Goldsboro, whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expression to Sally their deep appreciation and gratitude for service rendered by her to the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro, we will look at it. Number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Sally for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the City of Goldsboro and offer her our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into official events of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force effect from this to the fifteenth day of October, 2018. Offer this for adoption.
Summon.
Any discussion? All favors right hand. Resolution passed. All right, Sally. Now you can come on up.
Center stage. Go to the center stage, Sally.
Not yet. Just hold on. You ain't gonna forget what's wrong with you. I might say something. Yeah, I might. You might steal a little bit of ours, but my mind's on you. So I have known Sally most all these years, either through church, or through the city, and then all. Sally's been giving me her opinion about all these years. Sally's been with us running the planning department about all these years. And if Sally liked it, you knew it. If Sally didn't like it, you might know that too. She's been a wonderful employee, and we're gonna miss you, and we love you, and I don't know what we're gonna do without you, but I'm sure you'll come back a couple of times.
You'll be there.
All right. Gentlemen.
So the mayor just stole a little bit of my thunder, but I think we're all used to that. Sally, I don't even know how to sum up what you've done with your services at the City of Goldsboro. You're irreplaceable, you're priceless, and I just can't imagine coming to work on November 1st and not being there. But you've left us in good hands, and I'm moved. So not only is the planning department losing a valuable employee, but all departments are losing a important employee.
On behalf of the planning commission and the board of adjustment, I'd just like to echo what's been said here. Forty-two years is unbelievable, and my sixteen, seventeen years of being involved in planning commission, board of adjustment, one thing or another, there's been three mayors and several city attorneys, city managers, council changes, department head changes, and one thing has never changed. And that was when I needed something year older than a company. And we're gonna miss you. I know this planning commission will miss you. And thank you for everything that you do for us and for this whole city. Funny story, I remember about ten years ago now, I called her and said, "I need to know so-and-so about such-and-such property." And she said, "Well, gee whiz, that's in the jail. I have to go dig that house." I didn't even know we had a jail. And so, you know, that's how long she's been around, so.
It's cool.
God bless. Thank you so much for, on behalf of our group, thank you, Sally. All right. Let me get one of you inside. And then I'm gonna get one of y'all to Sally. Okay? Don't worry. I'm good at this, gentlemen. Have you said it or anything? All right. I got, let's get on the planning board real quick. Is that what? If you wanna say anything? Or you could always stay, and then we'll have to. Pat. This one comes.
You're trying to get your leg, keep your leg out of this thing.
I'm going to kill my camera off that way, but I'm working on it. All right. Thank you. You want to say anything?
I wanna say thank you to the council. It's been a good one. I'm glad you let me stay around this long. I've been cleaning out my desk, and I found one of my very first retirement, my stubs, check stubs, when I started here making two dollars and eighty-six cents an hour. And it's gone up a little. So I'm thankful for that.
Sally, don't tell Gene.
But I do thank you. It's been great. The people around here are great. No complaints. Thank you. Thanks.
Since I'm down here, we're gonna do the Goldsboro Awards. Do you wanna begin by that?
Good evening, mayor and council. The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contributions to the City of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to aid, is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of job duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The STAR evaluation should specifically focus on job-related outputs and our accomplishments in customer service, professionalism, problem-solving, quality improvement, teamwork, and community partnership. Tonight, we have two STAR awards. One is for the month of August, 2018, and one is for September, 2018. And I'm gonna ask Ms. Amanda Cummings, who is a citizen of Goldsboro, to come and present the August, 2018, award, followed by Captain Clay Gardner, who's gonna present the September, 2018, STAR award. Ms. Cummings?
No. Right, right, closer. Close, you guys? Okay. My name is Amanda Cummings, and I'm the Community Employment Program Director at Work Source East. Work Source East is a vocational training facility for people with disabilities. We serve consumers from across the state. So we have residential unit, and our consumers come and stay for about four months. They train in their desired training area. And once they go back home, the goal is for them to go to work. And one valuable part of their training here is internships. And we rely on community partners and employers in Wayne County to provide those internships. And it can be a challenge. We have a lot of good partners, but sometimes it is hard to take on people with disabilities coming into your job site and helping with that training. And Mr. Chester, from day one, I met him a little over two years ago, has always been on board. He has provided the internships in the welding and automotive area for us. He has also serves on our business advisory committee, has done that for about two years. And just always positive, always willing to help us. He never acts like we're a burden. Whenever we call and have students that want to do internship in one of those areas, he's excited, and we just really appreciate everything he does for us. When she was describing what the STAR award is, I was like, "Yep, check, check, check. He does all those things." And so, I just wanted to express my appreciation to him and let you guys know what an honor it is to work with him and to be here to be a part of presenting this award, because I don't know what we're gonna do without him when he leaves our, we rotate every two years, so he's rotating off our committee, but he will still be a valuable part of providing internships as long as he is around, and we just, we really appreciate him.
Good. Good morning.
So I did wanna make two quick comments. First, on Work Source East, I didn't know what Work Source East was really until I came later. I've been invited out to show a conference. It's unbelievable, it's phenomenal work that you've done there. If you haven't ever been, you should go. I mean, they are helping the neediest of the needy, and they're so swift and they're so appreciative out there when you go to the needy. Now, I've seen Mr. Chester several times, and he goes to all the things they have, and every time it's like, "Mayor, we need to grow this need of work. It's what can keep us going." So I get it, it's a big deal, and he has done phenomenal work with it and will continue, I promise. You have a true, true champion there. So you wanna say anything? I just enjoy what I do and represent the City of Goldsboro. That's pretty modest, 'cause you, he's done a great job, and we appreciate it. All right. Two. Might go. All right. Hold that. Yeah, I'm getting, I'm getting, this is probably the most, oh, okay. This is, don't sell only buyer. All right. We got one more?
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Gardner with the Fire Department.
What's your name?
On September 2, 2018, Engine One responded to the parking lot of the Wayne County Jail at 207 East Chestnut Street to assist EMS with an unresponsive person. Upon arriving on scene, I spoke with police officers on scene who informed me they were called to the scene for a welfare check, and the driver of the vehicle would not respond to them. The officer on scene had asked the driver to exit the car, and she had refused, locking the doors. After talking to the driver, she exited the vehicle with her eleven-year-old son. She continued refusing to speak as we tried to obtain the information about her identity and the events leading to her driving to the magistrate's office at 2:00 a.m. Firefighter Adam Boswell began building connection with the son and learned, as he calmed the child, as he held tight to his mother, and through the course of his exchange with the son, learned some of the basic information needed to provide the correct level of care to the incident. As the child provided more information, the mother would try to prevent her son from talking to Adam. During these exchanges, Adam was comforting to the child and reassured him that the police, fire, and EMS personnel were only there to help him and his mother. During one exchange, the son separated from his mother, and we moved him to the ambulance. Adam escorted the child to the ambulance and continued to obtain more information as to the nature of the call. The son was able to provide their address, address of his older sister, and also provided the phone number to his babysitter, who was able to meet him at the hospital to take care of the child. Through Adam's actions, the incident concluded with the best outcome possible. The mother received a proper medical care, and the son remained calm during an extremely difficult time. After the incident, multiple police officers commented and thanked Adam for his assistance. Adam displayed the values of the City of Goldsboro, professionalism, integrity, and customer focus, as well as delivering on the mission statement. It's for these reasons that I am nominating him for the Goldsboro Golden Star Award.
All right. I do wanna say that our firefighters, our EMS, our police, this is just one story that happens every night. These guys do phenomenal work, and it's all I could, but they're out on the street, first line, and you wouldn't believe some of the calls, the service, and welfare checks they give. So my house off to all of you. Thank you for, I'll say it now. You ready? Either you will say it, or?
I'd just like to thank the City of Goldsboro for this opportunity. Thank you, commissioners and mayor, for all that you do for the city as well.
Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our presentations. Then we'll move to public hearings. The first one is Z-1518 Lane Farms. Jennifer?
Item D is Z-1518 Lane Farms Incorporated. The property is located on the north and south sides of New US 70 Bypass between Salem Church Road and Claridge Nursery Road. The applicant is requesting a zoning change from R-12 and R-20 residential to highway business. The request includes two tracts of land, one north of the bypass and one south of the bypass. It's a total area for both tracts of forty-three point six-four acres. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have R-20 and R-20A residential; to the south, R-12 and R-16 residential; to the east, you have R-16 and R-20 residential; and to the west, R-20A residential. The property is currently vacant. A conditional district has not been requested in conjunction with their zoning change, so the property would not be limited to a specific use. The requested highway business zoning district would allow a number of commercial-type uses, as well as billboards, if all dimensional and separation requirements can be met. The city's adopted land use plan designates this property for medium-density residential and conservation. City water and sewer lines can be extended to serve the property at the expense of the owner. There is a portion of Track 1 that is located within a special flood hazard area. And as a reminder, on August 6, 2018, council approved a zoning change for the property immediately to the east of the subject property to highway business, which included the Lane Tree Conference Center building. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on November the 5th. And I do have some photos of the area being listed for reselling. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing requesting a zoning change from R-12 and R-20 residential to highway business. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we close this public hearing and move to the next. Z-1618 Sarah Edwards.
Item E is Z-1618 Sarah Edwards. The property is located on the north side of Van Street between Bush Street and Van Street terminus. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R-6 residential to RM9 manufactured home on the property. Surrounding zoning to the north, south, and east, you have R-6 residential; and to the west, R-9 residential. The property is currently vacant, and the applicant's proposing a placement of one manufactured home on the site. The city's adopted land use plan designates this property for high-density residential development. City water and sanitary sewer lines are available to serve the property, which is not located within a special flood hazard area. The RM9 zoning district would require masonry, underpinning, pitched roof, and horizontal siding. It will be required to have working windows and no rust, and have the appearance of a site-built home. The applicant has been required to relocate from her home and is having difficulty finding a residence. She intends to place one mobile home on the lot and occupy it as her residence. She has requested that a recommendation by the planning commission on this change of zone application be reported outwardly to the council after the public hearing. So at the conclusion of the public hearings, the planning commission will retire to the ante room to deliberate on this item, and staff will report out their recommendation for final action by council. So at this time, it is by motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission as reported outwardly after the public hearing. And here is just a photo of the vacant piece of property. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing requesting a zoning from R-6 residential to RM9 manufactured home on this property. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Come on up here to the podium, if you would, please, sir. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Councilman. My name is L. Montina Allen, and I own lots 66 and 67 on Van Street. And it was my understanding that that area was a flood area. So my question is, if she put a manufactured home on that lot, how would it affect flooding? And how would it affect the other properties in that area that's not manufactured homes?
I'm gonna tell you what I believe, what I'm reading, but it says here that the property is not located in a special flood hazard area. So some, the planning and engineering department has looked at this, and I don't think this is a flood area, based on what I'm reading. Okay. Don't come up and say, "I'm telling you a story," but I'm just, Jennifer, but let's ask our planning director and just see.
There is almost like a little donut hole in this area that is not within the flood hazard area. Properties adjacent to it are within it, but there's a little donut hole in this area that is not located within the flood hazard area.
There's your answer, sir.
All right. It was just my concern because.
Well, legitimate, but.
Like your jacket.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing none, we're gonna close this public hearing, and after all the public hearings, the planning commission will go and deliberate on this one and then come back to us tonight about this. The next one is item F, CU 1018 Ruffin and Jackson.
Item F is CU 1018 Ruffin and Jackson. The property is located on the south side of Wilmington Avenue between Isler Street and Devereaux Street. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow conversion of an existing structure into four apartment units within the R-6 residential zoning district. On December the 3, 2007, council approved a site plan for a parking lot to be used for the apartment units with a number of modifications relative to the apartment building. Existing structure was built in 1953 and contains 1,950 square feet. Based on the R-6 zone, the area of the lot would only permit conversion of the structure into three apartment units. A modification to allow an increase in the allowable density from three units to four units was approved in 2007. Other modifications approved at that time was provision of sidewalks, parking lot setback from eight feet to zero feet, and a drive aisle within, or drive aisle width from twenty feet to fourteen feet. Although initial improvements were made to the structure, all building permits have expired, and site plan reappraisal is required. On June 4, 2018, council adopted an ordinance which requires issuance of a conditional use permit to allow conversion of dwellings into three or more multifamily units. The amendment was developed to protect existing single-family neighborhoods from the intrusion of multifamily apartment developments, which would result based on lot sizes. The R-6 residential zone requires 6,000 square feet of land area for the first residential unit and 2,000 square feet of land area for each additional residential unit. Based on that requirement, in order to convert this building to four units, a total of 12,000 square feet of land area is required. As indicated previously, a modification to allow four apartment units was previously approved in 2007. There are no other apartments existing within this block of Wilmington Avenue. Two curb cuts will be provided for access to eight paved parking spaces at the rear of the lot, and due to the lot size and the configuration of the building on the lot, modifications of the dry aisle widths from twenty feet to fourteen feet and parking lot setback from eight to zero feet were previously approved. The applicant will be required to screen HVAC units and to install street trees along the street frontage. Two additional maple trees will be installed adjacent to the parking areas. The applicant has requested an additional modification of the rear yard buffer due to existing vegetation, which exists at the rear of the property. No sidewalks exist along any section of Wilmington Avenue, and council previously approved a modification of the sidewalk and fee-in lieu requirement. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation at council's meeting on November the 5th. And here is a photo of the existing building. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to allow conversion of existing structure into four apartment units in the R-16 zoning district. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next.
Item G is street name change for Kenway Drive to Keller Way Drive. A petition to change the name of Kenway Drive to Keller Way Drive has been submitted. Kenway Drive is a street containing approximately 1,220 feet within a Dare subdivision on the south side of US 70 West. The petitioner has indicated that he wishes to change the name of the street before it's completely constructed in order to avoid future inconveniences. The name Keller Way Drive is proposed in honor of his newest grandson. The city is authorized to change street names within the city limits according to provisions set forth in general statutes. While the statutes are very general in nature, the city follows the same procedures used by the county in renaming streets. Proposed name change has been sent to the county planning department to ensure that the name Keller Way Drive would not result in any confusion for emergency services. The county planning director has indicated that the county does not have any objection to the street name change, which has been proposed. A notice of public hearing was advertised in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks, and the street section was posted, and all adjacent owners were notified of the hearing by mail. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on November the 5th. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? Seeing no questions, we open this public hearing to change Kenway Drive to Keller Way Drive. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next.
Item G is street name change for Kenway Drive to Keller Way Drive. A petition to change the name of Kenway Drive to Keller Way Drive has been submitted. Kenway Drive is a street containing approximately 1,220 feet within a Dare subdivision on the south side of US 70 West. The petitioner has indicated that he wishes to change the name of the street before it's completely constructed in order to avoid future inconveniences. The name Keller Way Drive is proposed in honor of his newest grandson. The city is authorized to change street names within the city limits according to provisions set forth in general statutes. While the statutes are very general in nature, the city follows the same procedures used by the county in renaming streets. Proposed name change has been sent to the county planning department to ensure that the name Keller Way Drive would not result in any confusion for emergency services. The county planning director has indicated that the county does not have any objection to the street name change, which has been proposed. A notice of public hearing was advertised in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks, and the street section was posted, and all adjacent owners were notified of the hearing by mail. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on November the 5th. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? Seeing no questions, we open this public hearing to change Kenway Drive to Keller Way Drive. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing, and that's the end of our public hearings, so we'll excuse our planning commission and thank you, and I guess we'll see, well, we might not see y'all, but we'll see Jennifer. We'll see y'all in two weeks, we'll see Jennifer in a few minutes. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, so our next public hearing is the 2017-2018 CAPER. And I think Mr. City Manager, you're gonna present that?
Yes, sir. I'll present. Item H is our public hearing, as you said, on our 2017-2018 CAPER. It's allowed the citizens the opportunity to comment on the City of Goldsboro's consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for entitlement grantees receiving community development block grant and home investment partnership funds. On July 1, 2017, the City of Goldsboro received $300,854 in CDVG funds and $158,231 in home funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2017-18 to administer its HUD, its home and CDVG programs and activities. The primary objective of the community development program is development of viable urban communities and expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income. The CAPER provides an opportunity for the city to assess its annual performance and to discuss what actions or changes it should take as a result of its performance. In addition, it's designed to provide information on how the city actually used its funds during the most recently completed program year. A fifteen-day comment period began on September 10 and ended on September 24, 2018. Advertisements were placed in the news argus in accordance with HUD requirements. A draft of the CAPER has been prepared, made available, and placed at public access sites around the city at various locations, such as the library and city hall, and it was located on our website as well. My motion after the public hearing is to accept the recommendation of staff to, number one, direct the staff to incorporate any comments at the public hearing into our city's CAPER document, and authorize the staff to submit any needs identified or comments received to the Department of Housing and Urban Development after the required comment period has ended.
Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing and we'll direct the staff, well, we need, I need a motion to direct the staff to incorporate any comments and to authorize the staff to submit any needs identified or comments received to HUD.
Make a motion to direct the staff to incorporate any comments at the public hearing into the city's CAPER and authorize the staff to submit any needs identified or comments received to the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD after the required comment period has ended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll pay everybody's right hand. Opposed likewise? Motion carries. All right. Next, we're gonna move to our public comment period time. This is the time when anybody from the audience can come speak for up to three minutes on anything relating to the City of Goldsboro. So we'll open this public comment period. Anybody wants to come first and, sir? And you have three minutes. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Don Willis. I'm executive director for the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority. Excited to be here and wanted to share an opportunity tonight for our veterans, a group that's very important in our community. It's an important group for our G W T A as well as one of four of our workers are veterans. And so I'd like to share that the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority is honoring all veterans and active-duty military with a free bus ride, a free bus ride, starting on Monday, November fifth through Monday, November twelfth. Veterans and active military are asked to show a military ID or a D D two fourteen with a photo ID to board. We are honored to offer this small token of appreciation to those who have served our country with such dedication. Our veterans are the reason that we're free to work, play, and live. Each one of us owes our veterans in this community and throughout the country respect, our admiration, and our gratitude. If you want to know more about G W T A, how to ride our service, maps, schedules, anything like that, go to ridegwta.com. We have an online trip planner, it's a very interactive website, and we hope that our veterans will take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Who else would like to speak? Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Barnes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Barnes and I live in seventeen oh eight Lower Street here in the City of Goldsboro. And I come before you this evening to ask you all if you are aware what is going on in our city with our school system. And I'm hoping that you all will meet and decide to do, to write a resolution in support in them keeping Carver Heights Elementary School as a part of Wayne County Public School System instead of letting it be taken over by the innovative school district. It is very important for those children as well as members of the community and the City of Goldsboro that we do not let that happen. We need to leave Carver Heights Elementary School as the school that it is within the Wayne County Public School System now. Thank you.
And Ms. Barnes, can I ask you a question? I'm not here to debate the pros and cons, because I would be honest, I don't know. I do know you would think it's better to keep a school local. I certainly would think the concept is better. But I also heard today, and I don't know if this is true or not true, and I don't know if you know, I had heard they were voting on that like this week. Is that the state board? Is that, do you know if that's true?
Well, no, what it is, is that last week when we had the meeting that was at the Carver Heights.
Right.
ISD informed us that they would be making a decision notifying the superintendent whether they were going to recommend to the state board that they take over that school. We have been trying to get in contact with them for practically all afternoon to see if they have, have received other word.
From ISD?
Right. When ISD make their decision, the school, the state school board will meet on November one.
Okay.
They will notify the local school board. The local school board will have until February one to decide whether they want to close the school or have it taken over by ISD.
Now, now, let me just ask a question. When you say, so are you saying that the options are the local school will either close as a school or ISD takes it?
ISD takes it.
It's not, is there a third option that we keep it as a local school? Is that an option?
That's, they are not putting that on the table. That will be something that the school board might have to work on or, I can't speak for them. I can only tell you what I know and what I have...
And I guess, and maybe, you know, maybe you don't know, maybe you'll, is the local school board working to keep it a local school?
They are working to keep it in the Wayne County Public Schools. The county commissioners met last Monday and they want it to stay in the school system and they wrote a resolution addressing it.
You need us to write a resolution. So you need us to do the same thing?
You need us to write a resolution.
I need you all.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak from the public? Who else would like to speak? Mr. Wright first? Mr. Holiday, you can be after him.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members. Viewing audience. My subject today is snail's pace, Hurricane Matthew recovery efforts. I come before you tonight to request you schedule a joint city council and town hall meeting within fifteen days to explain, update, discuss, and answer questions on the following assistance programs under the city's management and control. The urgent repair program, the central single-family loan pool disaster relief program, the community develop, development block grant disaster recovery program, the community development block grant annual funding program, North Carolina Opportunity Zones program, and the J P Morgan Bank Investment Program. Several North Carolina counties, including Wayne and Goldsboro, are now in the position to receive federal and state disaster Florence funds in the very near future. And we haven't, from my research, even spent or repaired any houses under all these other programs, and yet we in position to get more money on top of money we haven't even spent to repair houses under some of these funds that we've got. All of Goldsboro Wayne County citizens need and deserve to know the status of disaster Hurricane Matthew funds. Whereas millions have already poured into Goldsboro, yet transparency has been noticeably absent. Without transparency, accountability cannot exist, and lack of accountability can serve as the incubator for unscrupulous actions within public government. Demonstrate to all citizens you care about their home, their neighborhood, and their wellness by accelerating disaster recovery efforts on the part of the city. As usual, I always like to entertain any questions or comments that the city council would like to make. I always, always like to let you know, though, when I come up to present something, I just don't come up to present it because I don't have anything to do tonight. I've looked this over for almost a year and a half and looked at the progress or the lack of progress we have really made. And either the city is not interested in these people and their homes, or either the man, something is broke. Because I spoke with one person and he's waited twenty months and he's had one visit to his house in twenty months under the central single-family loan pool. And that was a program you introduced, Mayor, at the beginning of twenty seventeen in your work study.
How would you suggest us accelerating the resources out to these people?
Well, the first thing is just having, like I said, a town hall meeting and just letting people know where we are. The state provides it with a little eight-hundred call. We don't have that type of resource. So just have a town meeting or a public release and say, "All you people who signed up for essential single-family housing, we, you are on step two. You have seventeen steps. You are in step three now. You are in step four now." But these people haven't heard anything, like I said. So the first thing is just informing people and just giving them an update. And I don't think an update every eighteen months is asking too much. But a lot of these people have just, when I talk to them, they said, "Mr. Wright, we had one visit out to our house. No phone calls, no letters, no nothing." And that's terrible.
I'll offer you a few comments, okay? First off, you're a hundred percent right. It is a snail's pace. And as you know, it's very, very complex. It's very, very convoluted and it's very, very difficult. And they have all the different programs and all, and the City of Goldsboro is a subgrantee to the county who is a subgrantee to the state, okay? So everything we're doing, we have to go through the county to submit to the state. And as you probably know, I think it was August when we first, even first got our first eighty-six homes on the buyout program. And then, and it took almost an act of Congress to try to get that done because it went from the county to the state to FEMA, back to Atlanta. I mean, it was, it's convoluted. Can we do a better job of, of trying to say, I think we know where our citizens are and I think we are helping all those that are able to be helped. If we need to do a better job of communicating that, then certainly we can look into that and we can do that. I, I'm not, I have not, this is the first I've heard. I've heard that it's slow, convoluted, and very hard to do. That all, I'm very aware of. But, but you gotta remember also, the one thing that you say that does bother me is you say we're not transparent. That's totally not right. We are totally transparent. We fill out every form, every form we do, every dollar we spent is being reviewed by HUD. So we are totally transparent. I mean, there's, there's not any form anybody can't get, see, or ask for anytime they want to. So there's absolutely full transparency and full reporting on the monies we have spent. I'm sure of that. I know that for a fact. So, so we are transparent. If you think we need to do a better job of trying to say what we can do, I think we're doing everything the law and plus more allows us to do. We're trying to take advantage of this money. A lot of this money hadn't even got here, as you know, it's two and three years from even getting here. So, so it's just a very slow, cumbersome process and I hate that for the people who are suffering.
One thing I did research, Mr. Mayor, is when I called the central single-family, that, that's managed by North Carolina Housing, they told me that there are certain counties, and they didn't want to mention Wayne to embarrass them, but there's certain counties that's very, very slow movers, there's certain counties that's very fast movers. But they have a team, they have a team, and all someone has to do for Wayne, from Goldsboro is say, "Hey, we need some help in getting contractors. Hey, we need some help in setting this up." All they have to do is ask for help and they could have asked for this help the last eighteen months and somebody from that office. So that's with the central single family.
We've had multiple meetings with these folks. We have our consultant who's an expert in this, or it's the county's consultant, it's not our, but yeah, they work with us. We have had multiple meetings with these folks.
And I don't want to belate the issue, but it, it looks bad also when we are able to almost finish building a school, finish building a multi-sports, multi-million dollar soccer conference, finish building a convention center at fifteen million dollars, almost finish building a fire station out of Seven Springs, who came online almost a year and a half after some of these other funds became available to us. But we can't repair somebody's roof from leaking, we can't repair somebody's windows in, in twenty months? That's, that's not doing a good job. And all I'm saying is let these people know. Don't put something out in print because these people don't, a lot of the folks that's flooded houses, they don't come to the city to look at any documents. And when I say transparency, I'm talking about transparency where you're talking to the individual people and we know who they are.
Absolutely.
And send them a letter saying, "This is where we are with this." Or allow them to come out to a town hall meeting. Seven Springs had fifty people and they had six town hall meetings. We had something like five thousand people and we wasn't able to have one town meeting concerning...
We can certainly have...
So, so we need to look at that.
Absolutely.
And I'm pushing for that.
Okay.
And if you need help, I'm available to help you.
So then two weeks, you'd like to, like us to have a town hall meeting in place?
Yes. And all the, all the city council can be there and appropriate departments and let people come up and tell you this story and that you can give information on where you're on in each of these particular loans. Because there's a lot, like I said, we have more money. When I talk with, with some officials, they're expecting to give us more money within two weeks appropriate for Florence. And we haven't even been able to help people fix their house for Matthew. Now, we've been in a position in the next two weeks to be getting a, a large sum of money to here in Wayne County and possibly some Goldsboro up for, for Florence. And we just need to look at what we're doing.
Well, I don't have a problem, sir. I don't have a problem with us meeting within, within two weeks to hear our citizens and what, you know, and give them some answers to their questions.
Well, I can think that every councilman will echo your feelings on that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else like to speak from the public? Anybody, Mr. Holiday?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening, sir.
A couple of weeks ago, there was a festival on Center Street and I happened to participate in that festival. And I took the opportunity to do a piece of my work that would represent the City of Goldsboro. And I hope that a member of the council would come by or so that I could give it to them at that festival, but maybe I was away when you came by, but I missed you. This is the piece that I did and I tried to find the pieces in here, the city logo.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
That's not why I came to talk to you tonight.
That's why you keep talking.
I live on a fairly busy intersection in this city and every day I sit on my porch to get a little fresh air and I watch cars run red lights because the person, ninety-nine percent of the time when they run that red light, they have this in their hand. Is there any possibility that the city could ban the use of handheld cell phones while you're driving? It has to be extremely dangerous. And I see people run the red lights while they're doing this.
I can't even begin to answer that question, so I'm gonna turn it to our attorney just to even try to answer your question. I have no idea.
There's already a statute in place that you're not supposed to be texting and driving anyway. And so it's just up to law enforcement officers to enforce.
Well, texting and driving or talking and driving? He, I think he's saying maybe talking too?
Oh, they're doing this.
No, they're just looking.
And you can't look at, I mean, I've seen cars run red lights because they didn't have time to put their phone to pray. That's my...
Well, we certainly can, can convey your message to the police teams, Mr. Holiday. Let's see if we can do more. And is that ours to keep? Mr. Holiday, is that ours to put in city hall?
Oh, I made it.
Well, well, come back up here, man. We need to get your picture with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna...
Come on.
You don't come up here, I'm gonna come over there and... We got, we got... We're gonna get a... Oh, you're looking at him. I've never seen you so shy.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you, Mayor?
Good, I hope you are, sir.
And everybody else?
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming on heels of Sylvia Barnes to say the same thing, kind of just reiterate, we are having this crisis where people from the outside are wanting to come and take over a school as if they knew our children better than we do. And that's a prob, I see a problem with that. There was a big meeting over at the school last week and I'm...
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you, Mayor?
Good, I hope you are, sir.
And everybody else?
Good evening, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming on heels of Sylvia Barnes to say the same thing, and kind of just reiterate, we are having this crisis where people from the outside are wanting to come and take over a school, as if they knew our children better than we do. And that's a prob, I see a problem with that. There was a big meeting over at the school last week, and I may have missed it, because I'm, I was pretty emotional, but I don't remember seeing a lot of it. I did see Board of Education people, I saw some other people, but I didn't see anybody from the city, so I didn't know, were you guys with it or not with it?
Well, you didn't see us because we weren't invited. I, I didn't know about it.
Everybody was invited.
Well, I mean, I didn't.
I was out of state, but I did follow up at the, at rebuilding broken places, and they brought me up to speed, sir.
I was out of state.
So maybe, maybe some people didn't know that there was an invite, but here's, here's what, I'm up here to say, we may be having some more meetings about this. So we will be making sure that you get an invite.
Please do.
And, and we need your coming out.
Okay.
We haven't set dates yet, but we will need people to come out. And here's, here's the issue. Why would a company come from somewhere else that doesn't know any of our children, come when they came to the meeting, and we asked them, well, what is your plan? They had no plan. They just said, basically, we're coming here, we're gonna find out what the barriers are, and then we're gonna fix it. But it's gonna take five years. So five years, that means that that whole elementary school will have moved on to middle school. Y'all understand what I'm saying? So if they fail at the end of the five years and say, hey, sorry, we thought we could do it, but we can't, then we got a whole school that has moved up to a middle school and has not been given the education that they need. So we need your support, gentlemen. The, the, the county commissioners are on board with it, the, the school board is on with it. We need to hear from you guys that y'all are on with it, because nobody should be able to come in and just take our schools like that.
Quick question. You said for five years, what's the plan for our school board here for five years? Because, and I ask you this because I'm over there in that district, and I watch kids move from North Drive to Carver Heights to Dillard. And for those five years, they're still failing when they get to Dillard. And our school system has been doing that for over five years.
Okay.
So it's like, it's, it's not a plan either way. You know what I mean? And, and it's a catch-22. I, if you, if you, if you don't do it, you know, it could be a problem. If you do, it could be a problem.
Right.
But we do know, right now, that our school system has been failing our kids.
Okay.
But we don't know whether this company's gonna come in and fail our kids. We don't know that yet. So I, I have a lot of questions myself. I've stayed out of it because we really, as a council, don't have a lot to do with the schools. I've been, phone calls, emails, Messenger, everything, and I, and I express my opinion because with, with, with certain individuals, because it's more information that I want to know as well. So hopefully, when you do have another meeting, let me know. I'll be there, I have several questions.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, I understand what you're saying, but it's also another side to it too, and that needs to be addressed as well.
And so let me just kind of address that. If, like I say, if you had been there, you would have heard me say that our school system, two years back, took Carver Heights and made it from two other schools. Prior to that, Carver Heights was, you know, Carver Heights, and it was kindergarten through four. And so when they're making their comparisons, now, they're saying, well, Carver Heights hasn't done well for such and such years, but that's not true, because Carver Heights, as it consists of right now, is different than it was three years ago. You understand what I'm saying? So prior to that, they took School Street, they took North Drive, and they combined it to make Carver Heights what it is now.
Yes.
Prior to that, School Street and North Drive were not failing schools.
Well, I heard School Street was.
No, no, failing, I mean, yeah.
Yes, I'll check on that, check those numbers as well, yes.
And maybe they were, but the point was, they, the school that they are now saying, looking at the statistics, is not the school that it was three years ago.
I'm, I'm still saying, yes.
So that's comparing apples to oranges.
Yes.
And, and, and now they're saying, so Carver Heights had a plan, a three-year plan, to see if they could turn the school around. They had a, they had a plan, they got money for it, they wrote grants, and now we're not giving them the three years, because it's only, they've been doing that for two years. And the thing that happened with the legislature was, they reduced the number of teachers at Carver Heights last year. All right? So you had, prior to that, you had nine third-grade classrooms. They pushed them into six fourth-grade classrooms. That increased the number of students in each one of those classes, and we took teachers away and TAs.
That's what my question, they took away, TAs, right?
They took away resources, and, but they still had this requirement. So you really, you, the data is corrupt, as far as I'm concerned. You're not looking at the same data. You're not looking at the same.
But that's what I'm saying, is, is, even whether it's the same school or not, you're still coming from one failing school to another. And also, this is what our school board allowed to happen. They made the decision to do all of this. So now you're still saying, we're putting, want to put this back in their hands to fail our kids again. All I care about is our kids.
Okay.
You know, I, I mean, nothing else really matters to me.
Me and you, me and you see the same thing.
Yes, exactly.
I care about the kids. I know these kids have connections. See, because all of this is not just about teachers. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
It's about where I'm coming up at.
Mm-hmm.
Because if I come to school hungry, it's gonna be a little bit different.
Yes.
Than if I'm coming from someplace elsewhere, and I come to school, I'm fully fed, my home is full of books, the people in my house do certain things that maybe don't happen.
Mm-hmm.
All right? My, and I can, I can take it all the way down to a cellular level, which you're talking about, brain systems, but I'm not gonna go there right now.
Yes.
It's not what this is about, but when, when you have that, it does change the ability for you to learn. So just because we're giving people tests, and you're seeing certain grades, does not mean that people can't learn it. It may just mean that we don't know how to educate.
And, and, and that's my point.
And my last point, my last point is, the people who came, when we asked them, what is your plan? They said they had none. So why would I put my trust in some people coming together who don't even have a plan?
And I, and I agree with that. I, I don't know, I don't know.
These people there now have a plan.
Yeah, I don't know when they, when they came in, or when they were called to even, and how long they had to assess the situation.
Two months ago, the guy who's in charge was hired.
Yes, so, I mean, you know.
And then he hired his people.
Yes, so you had, he had a process he had to go through, so he might not have a plan yet, but still, with our school system, we've had, we had gears to make a plan, and if the plan didn't work at School Street, then it's not working at Carver, regardless of the combine, it still hasn't been working, so it has to be some changes made, because...
And I'll go back to what I was saying prior. It's not the parent, it's not the teacher, it's systems. It's systems that have failed.
I agree.
All right? So just bringing in a whole new set of teachers doesn't necessarily correct the system.
Yes, but to take that system out of the equation that's already there sometimes might help, because to continue to do the same old thing i- is, is, in expecting that the change is insanity. You know what I mean? So that's my point, and I'm trying to get to.
Sir, I'm connected to you.
Yes, sir.
I know you.
Yes, sir.
You may be my, you're my principal, you're my teacher, I know you, I trust you. I may not be learning everything, but I trust you. In fact, the school may be the safest place I go in today, because my neighborhood may be rough, but at least when I know I get to that school, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna see my principal, I'm gonna see my teacher, and these are people I have connections with. And every time we change that, we're traumatizing our kids. Every change is a trauma.
Yeah, but we're traumatizing them by not giving them the education that they need, if the system's not in place.
No, no.
It's, it's a two-sided thing. I mean, I understand what you're saying, I don't want to go back and forth, but...
Me and you, I tell you what, we can have, we can have a conversation.
We can sit down, yes, sir. Let me know whenever, we can sit down and we can talk about it, I would love to.
Have a conversation about it.
Yes, sir.
But what I, what I need, and what we need, I think, is for this council to agree that we can't just let people come in and take over our kids, and we know nothing about them. There is no proven record that they can do anything.
Look, I do have a question, just kind of following up on what Councilmember Foster said, because, because there is some merit, they've been, the, the, our own folks have been in charge for two years. Do we agree with that?
Two years.
And it's a three-year program, right? We said there's another year left. Based on what you know, what you think, do you think in the two years, and, and first of all, I want to say, I totally agree with the fact that local control ought to be better. It, gosh, it, you know, it ought to be better for sure, because we care. But, but that said, and, and we made progress in the two years, and does it look like we're gonna make progress? Forget the test, forget all that, are we making progress getting the kids educated?
Okay, so here, here's, here's what I can say. I can't, I, I can't predict that. I wish I had a crystal ball like that. But here's what I am saying. This is what I am saying. If you put the supports in the school that you have right now, because they have connection, you stand a bet, in my, my opinion, you would stand a better chance of making progress than you have to bring in a whole new set of people.
And start over.
That the kids are not connected to, then they're gonna have to try to relearn all those people and come up with whatever their plan is, which nobody knows.
And basically, I understood if they come in, they fire, they can fire everybody.
Fifty percent, they could, they could, they could say, we want everybody gone. Or they might say fifty percent are gonna be gone.
And everybody has to kind of reapply.
And then they have to reapply for their jobs.
Well, can, is this something you can wait till the first of November to get from us, or would that be, is that, okay, is that soon enough?
If, if, if that is, as soon as you can get it, I'm on, we need it, whatever it is, we need it.
Well, we'll put it on our...
We need it better than that.
Well, it's up to the council. I mean, I'm good, but, you know, the Councilmember Foster's point, there's, there are some questions that, that I think we'd like to at least have some conversation with somebody on, to see that, you know, that it is the right path.
I just want to learn some more about what they're doing. But I know, I walked into a classroom...
We do, too.
At Carver Heights, and there was a teacher with thirty students, and she told me her teach, her train, her assistant had just, had just been let go, and I wouldn't want to be locked up in a room with thirty of them all day long. I mean, anytime.
So, and, and, and this is the point, when you have, when you have, you have to have a certain level, I'm gonna put it this way, a lot of people say, well, they're bad teachers, they just, they just over there doing nothing.
Bad teacher.
I don't believe that, okay? What I believe is that you have committed teachers that are just in a bad situation.
I agree.
Well, let us do this, we'll, we'll schedule an appointment with Dr. Dunsmore and the principal, whatever, and we'll try to get better to speed and better educated. Certainly, if somebody tells us the meetings are there, or the meetings are being held, we all care, we would all, I mean, we would definitely have a presence there. There's no doubt about that. So let us take it, and we'll try to set up and get a little bit better educated on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's be the villain.
Thank you, thank you. We'll do it. All right, yes, sir.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Terry Els, this is, oh, yeah. The work that I do in the community, nobody sees it. There's no cameras, there's no cheerleader squad, there's nobody there to stand behind me if I get in any kind of trouble. The work I do, I'm in the neighborhoods, all of the crime is going on, nobody cares about the kids that are walking up and down the street. I hear shootings, I see the police, sometimes I see shoes, and the police go the opposite way. They don't stay there. I see a lot going on, but I don't see any answers. I hear everybody, people come up, they talk about what need to be done, you have meetings, but you don't have any of the people who are affected by the things that are going on in the meetings. You can't fix a problem if you don't know what the problem really is, or where you're trying to fix it, where it's gonna end up. I know you guys have a good, a very important job to do, especially you, Mr. Mayor, being that you're supposed to be the leader, but what I couldn't tell you guys today is, I need you guys to act like leaders. Leaders are the examples that the community need to follow. And if you're not making the example, if you're not being the example, then you're really doing nothing. You're having meetings, and you're talking about things that honestly you know nothing about. Like the gentleman just said, there are kids that go to school, they're going to school hungry. There are kids that get off the school bus, go home, and they're home two to three hours by themselves, because the parent, whoever's in the house, has to work. The school board's doing a terrible job. I don't need to see the council and the mayor to be doing an extra terrible job. There's money in funds, nobody's helping. Nobody's helping these kids. I don't see the police helping them. You know how many guns I stand between to keep somebody else from shooting somebody else? I've done it so much, it gives me a headache. I needed a break. I left North Carolina for three and a half months because I needed a break. I needed a personal break. Because I do what law enforcement will not do. I go and I stand between it all. I speak to them where they at. If a gang leader want the kids, he go to the kids. If the police want to find a suspect, they go to the kids. I stand for the kids, I'm always with the kids, and I'm always around them. I need my council to stand up and do more than just sit here and have city meetings, or talk, or have meetings, talking about stuff that you guys act like you're not prepared to even try to fix. Now, I learned today that the city is getting ready to be sued. I want to know, are y'all leaders, or are you not? Because what I know of, if I'm suing my employer, I do not work in that job while I'm suing my employer.
Thank you, sir.
It doesn't work like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, sir. Wait a minute. TC, first of all, I want to thank you for going in the community, seeing things that we don't see. I mean, it's admirable, you, you know, you're making a difference, I appreciate that. There are some things that some of the council does that you probably don't know about. For instance, two hurricanes in a row. I've been in the streets helping people that are misfortunate. And I've, I've been up to the shelters consistently. I've fed people, I've given them rides to hotels, I've, I've gotten money together with other community members to make sure we could put them in a hotel until they could find adequate housing. So those are some things that I'm doing, but that's from the heart. I understand the plight of the poor people, just like you do. You know? And just keep doing what you're doing, and, and, you know, we, we're there for you. I'm there for you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, we're gonna close the public comment period and move on to our consent agenda. Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight.
All right. Mayor and City Council, presented for your considerations, item I through S of your consent.
Make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda items I through S.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vocal?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor President?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, our consent agenda is approved. Next, we have items requiring individual action, and we'll go back to Z sixteen eighteen, Sarah Edwards. Jennifer, you've got that to report out, please.
The planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning from R six residential to RM nine as presented by staff, so it is recommended by motion except the recommendation of the planning commission as reported out.
Is there a motion to approve the planning commission's motion?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All fair, raise right hand. Opposed likewise? Opposed likewise? Motion carries. All right, so we got that approved. Next, we'll go to the city manager's report.
I'm gonna have a report tonight.
All right, next, we'll go to, well, I've got one resolution, I'll do, I mean, I'm sorry, not resolution, but one proclamation on Halloween that I was gonna read real quick, and then we'll go to councilmember comments, if I can figure out what I do with them. All right, safety first on Halloween proclamation. It's the desire and responsibility of the city council to promote the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. The city council is concerned that our young citizens participate in the traditional Halloween trick-or-treat activities in a safe and orderly manner. The city council feels that this best method for making a safe and orderly Halloween is through a proclamation from the mayor stating forth the guidelines of these activities. Therefore, I check in on Mayor City of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim, safety first on Halloween, and encourage all citizens to promote and observe the following safety guidelines. Parents are asked to supervise the Halloween trick-or-treat activities of their children, and to ensure that trick-or-treat activities are limited to children under eighteen years of age. Trick-or-treat hours will be observed from six P.M. to eight P.M. on Wednesday, October thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Trick-or-treat activities shall be confined to the youngsters on the neighborhood, residents who wish to participate in trick-or-treat are asked to leave the porch light on, or other outdoor light during these hours. Parents are asked to explain to those homes with no outdoor light, or not participate in trick-or-treat, and that these homes should be passed up. These guidelines are set forth in hope that all our citizens of Goldsboro will enjoy a happy, safe, and orderly Halloween. And I would just encourage everybody who's out that night, to be very careful with kids, you know, they'll dart out, and they'll do this, and they'll do that, so just be mindful, a lot of kids are gonna be out that night, and we certainly want everyone to have a safe Halloween, especially our kids. With that, we'll go to councilmember comments, Councilmember Williams first.
I had something prepared today, it's been a lot going on. I've had to go to court for something that I didn't do. And that's okay, I just ask that God blesses them. You know, they're not hurting me as much as they're hurting the community with these lies. People who have interacted with me, they know me, they know my character, and they know my heart. There's people out here that know my heart, that have been part of my life from the time I was born. So, you know, people can mislead others and say I'm some monster, but search for the truth for yourself. Search out the truth. This council tonight, they were supposed to be fact-finders, that's their job. They are like judges without the black robes. And they didn't search, they didn't fact-find to search out the truth. And that's okay, I still love them, and I ask that God blesses them and touches their mind, and allows them to make better choices and better decisions. And I just ask that everybody pray for me, and pray for my family, because I am getting a lot of lashes, and I'm doing it for the people, and I will do it again, I will do it again, because it's worth it. Every board that I've sat on, I've made a difference, even though I got kicked off a board today for untruths.